June 5th, um, Russ, you were, you were not here on June 5th, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Russ abstains, thank you. And the next is, uh, June 19th, and it looks like we were all here, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 19th?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agreed. And July 17th, Pam, were everyone was here as well? I don't have a listing for July.
I don't, I have it looking.
You know what, we'll hold off, we'll hold off on the July minutes until September 4th. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Shapiro lot line realignment. We've had a request from one of the co-applicants to defer this decision to September 4th, as we're working out some issues with the easement, so, uh, with the agreement in the board, we'll move this to our September 4th meeting. Um, do I need a motion to do that, or?
No.
So we'll just letting everybody know one moment, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Springbrook Meadows, nine lot subdivision on Townsend Road. And do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. I have the plan to put up i- if, if you want me to, uh, we're just looking to get a little more time to deal with the DEC, so I can put that up and talk about whatever you want to talk about, but we're-
Why don't, why don't we do that, just in case there's members of the public that would like to see that, since we're in public hearing?
So, the project is approximately ninety-nine acres in size. Um, the applicants looking to create, um, I believe it stands right now at eight lots, um, are going to be broken off for residential building lots. The remainder of the property is going to be conveyed to an adjoining piece of property that the applicant owns, and there's also a small piece of property that you can't quite see at the top of the page, that's going to be conveyed to a neighboring parcel, to help that guy sort of straighten his lot line out. Uh, it's, it's all individual well and septics, uh, as proposed right here. Uh, the storm water is going to be centralized, uh, about in the middle of the, of the overall lot. Um, you can see it right there, below the second lot from the top. The two other lots are going to be at the top of the property, they're going to be, uh, those are probably about five acres in size, the bottom one, the other one is about a acre and a half in size. Uh, all the lots are going to probably be around three acres or so.
Okay, and the parcel that you're conveying to the adjoining lot, uh, no further development plans at this time?
No, there's, and nearly all of it is in the wetland, and probably what's not in the wetland would be eaten up by the wetland buffer, so you're not looking at a piece of property that's ever gonna-
Capability to develop.
Yeah, exactly. And also, there's the floodplain that encompasses the majority of it, uh, that overlays the, uh, the wetlands.
Do we still have, I know we have had a couple conversations about the driveways and whether they were going to share an outlet onto the road, or, or have they been split back apart now? Scott, I think you had mentioned something about the highway department. There was a change in the way the highway department was finding those were working?
The reference is to have individuals, if possible, only because of the way it's, uh, issued later on between neighbors.
I recognize that's different from what we probably said at the beginning in the, the process, and that's because there's just been a change in, in the way we've been seeing them come through with the highway department recommendations.
Yeah, there certainly is the plan to split those driveways back apart.
So they'll be individuals, okay.
Uh, they're probably just going to be five, six, ten feet in between the driveways, uh, so they'll be pretty close where the driveway cut are. Um, this plan actually shows a couple of them still together. Um, you know, we have some updating to do that we've been holding off on, only because we're still in, uh, dealings with the DEC about environmental issues, so. Uh, we have submitted to the DEC a couple of times, uh, the first time they asked for more information, we submitted the stormwater information that they had requested, uh, they came back with, with a couple of concerns about habitat and, and other items, the possibility of impacts from our project on, uh, potential habitat. So we're, we're setting up a meeting with our office, the, um, biologist consultant for the applicant, and the, uh, DEC.
Michelle, do you, do you have copies of those letters, or that course?
I can certainly, sorry, I apologize, I thought you were CC'd on it, but I'll, uh, send those over to you.
And let's make sure that Pam, if you don't have the copies, then let's make sure they come into the planning office as well, just so that we're-
Absolutely.
We kind of know where you stand. What were this, what were those species identified?
Uh, bog turtle and, uh, the indiana bat.
Okay. So the bat we're kind of familiar with, with the bog turtle, is it habitat, or is it a?
Um, that's actually, uh, that's the discrepancy right now, whether-
That's, that's the discussion, huh?
Whether the, the actual, uh, habitat is on the property, or is just adjacent to the property. Uh, we originally had a report done that stated that there was no habitat on the property in the development area. Um, I think they're concerned about an area that's just off the property that may be within, um, one of their zones-
So it's maybe a travel way or something?
But certainly, they're not identified as being right on top of where we're developing.
John, is that the, the wetlands behind it Mr. McGrath is keeping?
Yeah, correct. All, basically from the back of the, uh, the homes, uh, the, the area in between where the homes, uh, there's a space in between the homes, between these six and the, uh, two on the top. All that area is going to be conveyed to the, uh, the applicant's other piece of property. Um, as for where the habitat is that they're concerned with, uh, you know, the DEC likes to keep that, um, amongst themselves, really, so that's what we're, we're dealing with. Um, there, our biologist is going to reach out to them to sort of coordinate what we need to do to make sure that we don't impact any, any concerns that they have.
Okay.
John, let's, let's Mr. McGrath's longer term, uh, plan for that whole property. I mean, that's all that middle, all that wetland, I mean, is that?
To be honest, uh, with, from my conversations with him, he just wants to keep it his, uh, his farm. Uh, you know, he actually owns the parcel next to this, that is his, uh, farm, and he basically wanted this property as a buffer to his farm. Um, he bought the property, had planned on breaking these lots off, conveying this property, and then not doing anything with it. I, I think he, you know, passive recreation, I guess, walking through there and all that, so. Thank you.
Michelle, you're hearing this with regard to the DEC concerns, is there anything else that we should be doing as the planning board, or just allowing to take it?
I think, I think what happened here is we had that, a project close by Jackson Corners, which there was an application where I think it was a water main or something, and then DEC kind of stepped in and said, wait a minute, this area is close by, so I'm not sure if there's actually, if they've actually identified habitat in, on the site, or just in the area. And I think they're probably just going to ask them to, um, identify, you know, where they think the habitat might be, and also, didn't you mention on the phone that they might have been concerned about one of the stormwater basins and the discharge into the wetland?
Correct.
So that may have to be changed, okay, because they're concerned about the water quality in that wetland, and then its effect on habitat for the turtles. So that, all of that, um, I think has to be worked, worked out with Mike and Wiggie, the biologist.
Do you have that scheduled, it's in process?
The, uh, the meeting? That, that's what we're working on today. I, I have been in contact with the, the applicant, and he's been in contact with his consultant, and I believe they've reached out to the DEC, or they're going to in the near future, to get that all set up and, and move forward with that, so.
Okay.
We're working on that.
And anything else you're still working on with regard to the plan, or with changes?
Not at this time, only because if the DEC comes back and tells us that they want the discharge from the stormwater at the, you know, south end of the property, then we're going to be sliding lots over and-
Okay.
Unfortunately. Um, I think the, the actual project as it looks right now is-
Will hopefully not change.
This is, this is what, what it's going to be. Uh, it's just how they want the stormwater coordinated with the, with the homes. I mean, we might flip the, the homes up and put the stormwater basin down at the bottom of the property, or top of the property, or what have you.
John, just a question. Um, as opposed to the pond, you could do individual rain gardens and maybe infiltration trenches at each house to avoid having to make one central pond?
Yep, that, that is certainly a possibility, uh, that's something that we've discussed. One of the concerns with those items are the, um, the groundwater elevation, um, and getting all the water downhill into those, and not be in the wetland or the wetland buffer. You know, if we were to slide them to the back of the property, it'd be difficult to collect all the water and stay outside of the buffer.
Your septic's are in the front?
Uh, the septic, some of them are in the back, some of them are in the front. So that's another thing that we'd have to shuffle around the septic systems, because we'd have to maintain a fifty-foot separation.
Because at the end of the day, if you have the pond, I mean, the town's not going to take over that pond, so it's going to become the responsibility of one property owner, unless it falls across the property, and then they'll have to be enter residential agreements that if they go into fault on the pond or, or homes associated.
Right, and, and I think that was something that we would, we would have to discuss with the town is how, how the maintenance of that pond would be carried out, maybe some sort of district where all the homeowners, um, you know, are responsible for maintaining it, or maybe one lot owner is responsible.
That's why I come back to it, if possible, if you could get away from the system and keep it individual.
And, and that may be where the DEC is directing us, too, because that-
Because you're not building any infrastructure other than the homes, you're not putting road in or anything like that, so.
Yep, that, that is one of the possibilities, and when we hear back from them on their, uh, their quality concerns, that's probably an avenue that we're going to-
And it might give you a little more frontage reach to the main plots if you lose that property, right?
Right.
So Scott, you're thinking about rain gardens or something like that to help defray?
Infiltration, or even, yeah, there's a lot of practice, several practices anywhere that can be done, I mean, the town's not going to want it, there'd be no reason for the town to maintain that pond if that homeowner doesn't, that just becomes a leasing issue for us.
Okay.
Of a grant of a larger scale than a rain garden, because our homeowner's going to maintain it.
Yeah.
Flowering house.
Right. That's definitely something we'll, we'll take a look at and see if we can do that. Maybe that's the route we can go to, to mitigate-
If you want to have necessary one pond, you could have one in the front.
Right. We'll, uh, we'll certainly look into it.
I think in the, in our last layer, when, when you talked about the pond and how close it was to the house and the driveway, there was some discussion about, you know, safety and, and aesthetic, you know, somebody want a pond sitting right alongside the driveway, that kind of thing, so.
Right. Okay, that, that's something we could definitely look into.
John, Michelle, anything else we should be talking about or discussing right now? Okay. All right, questions or comments from board members? It sounds like we just need to wait for the, uh, DEC to weigh in here and figure out if it's going to change the plan significantly. I'm asking if there's comment from the board, any questions or comments from board members?
Now, the new floodplain maps that have been impacting people in this fishbowl flood insurance, is there any impact here?
We're going to have to, uh, take a look at it and run the analysis on the floodplain.
Okay, so it might have an impact on you.
I mean, I'm sorry?
It might have an impact on you.
It may. Um, the, the area where the homes actually sit are probably about ten feet higher than the surrounding area. I know the floodplain maps, when they're drawn, they're, they're a little crude, because they can't pick up all the contours, so-
Lots of people have been complaining about it, and this is the first opportunity I've had to ask, so I'll go with that.
Yep. No, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely have to look at the, the new impacts of those, uh, floodplains, and that's, that's something that we're going to definitely, uh, take a look at. We're, we're really waiting to hear back from the DEC to find out what they have to say, and then we'll look at the other, uh, because I think the, the DEC is going to have the biggest thing, impact on, on the project, so. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Okay, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak for or against the Springbrook Meadows nine lot subdivision on Townsend Road? Um, John, how much time do you think you need?
We're looking at probably the, um, I'm not sure which, uh, meeting is in October. Is there a meeting in the early part of October, or the late part of October? Both? Both, yeah, alright.
Pam, I don't have the agendas, is it October 2nd?
If it's the 2nd, yeah, we'll, we'll look for the, uh, second meeting in October. That's, that's pretty early.
Sixteenth? October 2nd or the 16th? Right, okay, so the 2nd or the 16th?
The 16th would be fine.
Okay, so, um, any final comments before we ask for a motion to adjourn us to Sep- uh, October 16th, excuse me? Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn to October 16th?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, please stay in touch with Michelle, too, and just make sure that we get copies of all the correspondence, too.
Absolutely, I'll send that over.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Mountain Glory Lot Line Realignment on Augusta Drive.
Good evening, my name is Darren Scalzo, I, uh, I work for W.E. James Associates, Small Engineering and Land Surveying Firm, Russell River. It's my first time appearing before this board, uh, and I see the gentleman before me had a nice presentation up on the, on the screen.
Well, we're in a public hearing for that, so that's, that's okay.
Uh, what I do have is the maps that we submitted to the planning board, which I can just tack up here, if that's fine.
Great, thank you, and I think we should have, we have a couple of copies.
Uh, I'm here this evening to discuss something that I have never been in front of a planning board to discuss before. Um, we're here on the applications for discussion, but, uh, the application was submitted as a lot line change.
Right.
Um, the subdivision map for Mountain Glory Homes was signed by the planning board chair on September 7th, 2010, filed in the Duchess County Clerk's Office on September 13th, 2010.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that map, which was filed, uh, our organization had nothing to do with the engineering or surveying, uh, that was provided for that. Um, our services were obtained by Mountain Glory Homes, uh, to complete the field portion of the lot buildout, uh, the layout of the driveway, the foundation, uh, and other appearances that were required for, uh, building permit. Um, the previous surveyor had closed his business, and, and he was unavailable for us to contact for any support as well. Uh, we went about our tasks, and, uh, we discovered some inconsistencies in the lot, uh, the configuration of the lots, more or less the boundary line of the lots.
So you, you came into this for what, what reason, I mean, what made somebody take a look at this?
Well, we, I was out there to, uh, lay out the, uh, the driveway and the foundation, and for me to be able to do that-
Okay, for one of the lots.
-I needed to establish where the property lines were, uh, so I could certainly meet the requirements of the setbacks for the building.
Okay.
Um, we, we had, there were inconsistencies with file map values to the field evidence that we had found. Um, I had horizontal conflicts as well as vertical conflicts. Uh, proceeded to gather more information, uh, for the entire Augusta Drive subdivision, uh, so I could pinpoint where the actual outlines should be.
Okay.
Um, I confirmed the bust in the boundary with an overlap of approximately twenty-eight feet on the, on the rear of the parcel. Uh, I tried to recreate the file map boundary by holding the only monumentation that was noted on the file map, which was the iron pins in the front, which is, in essence, what pushed the lot back. Um, my assumption is that the previous surveyor included a length to the center of the road, which pushed that lot back, and because it was unaskew, the, it was an odd, not your normal twenty-five feet. Um, the topography of the driveway and the house area, uh, so I was going to lay out the cuts and fills on that, uh, they indicated, uh, a mislabeling of the contours, which, uh, set me out approximately eight feet as I approached the house location.
Higher, or?
Higher.
Because there is a requirement for a maximum grade on the drive.
I understand that, yes, yes I do. Um, it was a nearly eight-foot vertical bust. Uh, the general alignment, uh, was, I was hitting contours, but they were at the wrong intervals.
Okay, I was going to say, so it's actually eight, eight feet, which caused the property to be steeper, not just the whole plan was off by eight feet?
That's correct. Actually, yeah, I don't know if you, you probably wouldn't have the, uh, the original file map, but I, I do here, and, and what the, uh, the original file map showed was coming off Augusta Drive, and it seemed to have a small belly to it, and then climb.
Right.
Uh, where the belly had labeled contours that went from one thirty-four to one thirty-two to one thirty-two, which would indicate a low area, and then it continued to climb up, uh, and at the rear of the lot, uh-
Yeah, there was supposed to be a belly originally, climbing up to a flat area.
Correct.
That's where the house was going to be.
That is correct. Um, our field survey determined that there was no belly at all, it was a continuous climb, incline, from the little all the way to the back of the lot. Um, as I say, I hit, uh, my intervals, which led me to believe that there was, it was a, it was a simple mislabeling of the contours, which led to the engineer that designed the driveway to design according to that misinformation. Uh, in essence, the driveway for lot two needed to be redesigned, which is, uh, we, once we had our fingers in the project, we ended up doing that, and, and I designed a driveway that met the town code, uh, for the, uh, off the road with the maximum of eight percent change, once you hit the four percent, and then, uh, we are a minimum, well, actually, we're less than the fifteen percent maximum for the main portion of the driveway, and we're no greater than four percent as you approach, uh, approach the house, which all meets the town code.
Okay.
Uh, actually, the driveway is in its paved condition, uh, we did a final as-built on, on the 29th of July, and, uh, I confirmed with the information that was applied to the building department that it is in fact, uh, meets the town code.
It's a compliant drive, okay. I was, because I was going to ask, does the building department have the new road, the new driveway profile?
They just, they just received it, I wouldn't expect that they've had a chance to look it over. Um, as Mountain Glory Homes still own the lot one, um, the way to proceed here was for a file map correction. Uh, there's enough real property out there, meaning the actual physical land, uh, to satisfy the requirements of the town code for maintaining a two-lot subdivision that was, uh, filed in 2010. Um, I lo-, uh, modified the lots, I moved actually the contiguous line in the middle, approximately six feet to the south, a- and that's what allowed me to meet not only the bulk, all of the bulk requirements for the town.
For both lots?
For both lots.
Okay.
Uh, I met with the town engineer and the town attorney on, uh, June 27th, and informed them of my findings, uh, and, and to seek guidance, really, and, uh, I went over the application with Mr. Bryant, and, uh, he, uh, actually, he waived one condition of that, uh, for the map that you see, he wasn't looking for the, uh, the slope map that, that had been approved with the previous subdivision, as I say, the topography-
Oh, the contour, got it.
Yes, uh, so that, that was, you know, he, he had waived that one item, um, you know, that shows the, uh, wetland slopes and the lot count formula. Uh, Mr. Bryant recommended that we apply to the planning board with the intent of treating this action as a lot line change, as it seemed to be the most practicable way to move forward. Uh, I don't know that you have a, a procedure for a lot line, or a file map correction.
No, but I think, um, it sounds like we're going to have to refile the map, you're going to have to have a new final map.
Oh, that's exactly where, uh, I-
Yeah.
Mr. Wood recognized that the lot lines weren't right to begin with, uh, so, you know, I, I don't know that we could actually even call this a lot line change.
Right.
Um, and, and he concurred that this was the way to proceed. Um, the house on lot two is currently complete, final as-built, has been submitted to the building department, as I mentioned before, showing both the original file map lines and the proposed correct lines, um, correct deadlines, and, uh, we're, this is, I'm wrapping it all up right here.
Good.
Uh, we can't, we can't file a map in the clerk's office, uh, even a correction, uh, without planning board recognizing that, that this needed, i- it's a legal document, I cannot alter a legal document, I can't file a new meets and bounds description-
Understood.
-until you recognize that there was a blunder here, and, uh, and we're trying to correct that.
How do we know who's right?
Well, you know what, it's a-
How do I know that you're right and the other land surveyor's wrong?
It's, it's a, uh, for lack of a better phrase, it's a preponderance of evidence. I ran my traverse, my travers.
I'm sure he's going to say the same thing.
All the way, oh, you know what, he's out of business, sir. And, and I'm sure he will, because I-
Who was it?
We tried to contact him, and, and he was unavailable. Well, the, the name on the map that was filed is Ray Kilmeier. Uh, and I, uh-
Enough said.
So I, I, I can't, I, I reached out to him, and I was no, uh, no contact back. So, uh, but I am confident, sir, uh, by the rules of surveying, that, that we are correct in our determination.
Okay.
As I say, I, I ran the whole horseshoe of, uh, of Augusta Drive and proved that everyone had what they were supposed to have as far as land values go, and, uh, that remaining lands is, you know, what we have. Uh, the original file map also, uh, the surveyor actually almost pinpointed where he, uh, where he made his blunder. Uh, the deed that he was reciting called for a, a length of two hundred and ninety-three point four or five feet, that was the deed, uh, recited. His survey showed three seventeen ninety-one, there's twenty-five feet right there. I, I don't, I don't understand, a- as I say, I can't answer for him, I didn't do it. Uh, but my assumption is, if you were to look at the map here, what's in red, if you were to slide that whole thing forward, it falls right in the center of the road, and all the evidence of the fence line and the iron pins that I found along the back, they all hit.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where we are. I, um, the, the process of subdivision had been completed in 2010, I'm not here to, to open up any of those other, uh, things that have already been approved by the board. I, I'm, what I'm here for is to just ask that you consider this, uh, so I can, it can be filed in the county clerk's office.
Okay, so, one of these lots is built, and the other one you're in the process, you said, of, of building, is a building permit on the second?
Well, actually, I don't, I, you know what, I haven't done any, uh, topography to confirm, uh, what the driveway is for lot two yet, or pardon me, lot one, the one that's undeveloped, because I'm sure the lot one driveway needs to be redesigned as well.
Okay.
So I, I have not done a, and, and the building department, once they get ahold of the application, they will see a site plan, uh, delivered, which they have to maintain the town code, uh, requirements as well.
Okay, I was, so, the lot that's completed, when you say you meet all the requirements, you meet side yard setbacks-
That's correct.
-rear yard setbacks, everything-
That is correct.
-that you would have-
Yes, as well as the driveway, uh, maximum slope.
Okay. And the, the acre-
With the old lines or the new lines?
Pardon me?
With the old property lines or the new property lines?
Uh, the new, uh, well, they actually meet them with both.
With both, alright, that's what I want to know, to meet them with both.
Yes, yes, because he was long in the back, uh, e- even, so the rear yard, he had it as, you know, fifty plus twenty-eight, so, and the sides weren't all that bad, as you, as I say, if you slide that down, they were a few feet.
And you've got just over an acre in both lots, it's one acre.
Actually, uh, lot number one, uh, total acres, one point zero one acres, and lot number two is one point zero four. As I say, this is the first time I've ever had to, uh, stand in front of a planning board for this type of-
Do you have a feel for the number of square foot, square feet that you're adjusting the overall lot size by, because of the error?
I, you know what, I, I don't have that handy.
Roughly, is it less than twenty thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Right there, yeah. Uh, you know what, actually, on the bottom of the map-
For the record.
We have, uh, we have the new, uh, the new areas, as well as the old, you know, uh, lot one went from forty-five eight four three to forty-four, so there's a balance there.
So what this, what this becomes is a minor lot line realignment, right? Lot line adjustment?
Right, and under twenty thousand square feet of red, less by resolution award, you can authorize a lot line adjustment. So taking that one step further, um, that same authority, since it's less than twenty thousand square foot difference, you could approve, uh, the chair to sign a new map that will have a note on it referencing the purpose of this filing is to correct.
You said by resolution, Tom, is it by resolution or by motion?
By motion, okay.
By motion.
Okay, the title is, uh, File Map Corrections Board, uh, and, and it references all the challenges that I found along the way in the notes that are on the plan.
Darren, what did Mr. Kish say when you talked to him about it?
Darren, what did Mr. Kish say when you talked to him about it?
Uh, Mr. Kish actually let me run travers through his yard, and, which was great. He was unaware that there was a boundary conflict at all, which really there wasn't. As I say, there was an erroneous survey that he wasn't aware of and when I came in and my lines are contiguous with his. There's an old fence line that runs there. He assumed that he was running the fence, which is because he was.
So I'm sorry, the fence sits on, on the new line?
The new line.
Right.
On the correct line.
Well, on the correct line. On the correct line. Thank you. And, and so this is not a contested-
Not at all.
Okay. Do we, do we need to really verify that?
No, because under the education or map that's sealed by a license lawyer and engineer is supposed to prove to you that the line is there and this is really a rare or strange occurrence.
No.
I don't wanna be a stickler, but wasn't the previous one just as valid theoretically?
But you had every right in your duties to rely upon it.
And when we, that's exactly right. When we approved the original subdivision, we did it in the full, good faith and assumption that a license-
In fact, this showing that the fence is right on the lot line is probably more digging for the correct line as opposed to a line.
Well, and the iron pins itself.
The filed map showed no evidence of possession at all on that line. And so I, as I say, I had to base what my assumption of his lot lines were on the only evidence that he called out, which was the iron pins in the front.
Is the, you said one of the houses was built?
That is correct.
Are they gonna be upset that they've lost 28 feet of backyard?
Well, as of right now, the, the house that's built is still under the control of Mountain Glory Home.
Okay, so, okay. That's what I was, I didn't know if it'd been sold or not.
And that's why I'm here. If, if one of the lots had already been sold, we'd have to pursue another avenue for this.
Thank you. I just missed that part.
Again, being somewhat paranoid here, the, what about the little tiny area that it doesn't even say who is the owner? That would be the corner that's actually, no, up, 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 other way, right there, that little piece in there that now suddenly, it's not Mr. Kish's, but it's the same kind of thing. He is losing.
He's not losing. No, no one's losing.
This is a correction of the map.
They're only losing if they thought the erroneous map-
On his filed map, it's correct. On Kish's filed.
Right, but don't, weren't they given maps-
No.
From the same, when Mountain Glory came in, they all got-
No. The only notification they got would be public hearing and they come in and look at it.
But nobody noticed during the public hearing that it was all-
And the argument you get when it comes to public hearing is, well, this is the most recent survey, so it's gotta be correct, but that's happened lots and there's been lots of misses.
Okay.
I, 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 I'll work for you from here.
Okay.
What we would do is certainly have any other questions or comments from board members we can go through, but the board at this point could make a motion if it wanted to approve this as a minor lot line realignment and authorize the chair to sign a corrected and amended map.
Mm-hmm.
So Jason's making that motion?
Second.
I have a second for Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So what you'll do is please work with the town attorney and with Pam to get us a corrected map.
Very good. You have no comments on the one that I submitted? Any, anything that may have been missing?
We could have some comments. I may have sent these to your office, but it's, it goes over the, you know, how you came to reconstruct the map and just questions about the topo and things like that.
And then Scott, this isn't, Scott, this isn't part of our motion, but if there's something that the building department needs to validate those driveways, let's just make sure with the building, that that's tied to the building permit somehow, that that's the review to approach.
It's a condition of the CEO. It's a condition that the building permit is a condition-
Okay. And you understand what the requirements of the town are so that-
Oh, absolutely. I, yes, I spoke with, with, on numerous occasions, making sure that I had exactly what I needed.
They have to demonstrate before they get their building permits that they can build it and then once they do, they'll give you back your check and make sure it's not-
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget your map. The next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for Millbrook Properties amended site plan on Route 82.
So the property that we have in front of us is at the corner of 376 and 82. It's across the street from the gas station in between the attorney's office and the vacant lot on the corner. It's, there's Mario's Brick Oven Bread, I believe it's called. In the back, there's an eye doctor and the front end copy a second. And what the applicant is looking to do, there's an existing, the existing building is approximately, I believe, about 6,000 square feet. They're looking to put an addition on the building in order to facilitate some new bread making machines. Apparently, the height that they need to have for these specific machines, raising the roof of the existing building is not the, not the way to go. So they're looking to build an addition onto the building with probably 18-foot ceilings. There's not gonna be a second floor. It's all gonna be one floor. It's just gonna be very tall to, to give them the, the height that they need. This area is going to be, as you can see on the bottom, it's going to be overlapping the parking lot. There's six parking spaces there, which will just be slid out to the front of the new building. We're not eliminating any parking.
Are you adding parking since you're expanding the square footage?
We're, we're actually not adding parking from what we've looked at with parking spaces. There's a sufficient amount of parking there. We've, we would actually ju, only need two more parking spaces from what we're calling this area back here because it's, it's not retail.
It's not retail spaces?
It's basically warehouse manufacturing storage area, which-
And you're anticipating an increase of two employees? Is that the, the-
No, not necessarily. These are, these are automating machines. That's just based on the square footage of that use from the town code. So it wouldn't be an, there wouldn't actually be any more cars. It's just based on the 1,800 square feet that we're adding to the building. It would require two more parking spaces, but we actually have enough existing.
Sure. John, this new stuff, I mean, is this gonna be sold right there or is this like hanging, gonna be sold through other retail outlets or something?
It's gonna be a little bit of both. I don't know the mixture. I know he certainly sends things out, out the door. That's maybe the majority of the stuff goes out the door, but whatever's produced there would also be sold in the retail area of his shop.
But that square footage isn't changing? It's just-
No, no, that's, that's, that's remaining the same.
But he is gonna sell more product, right? So-
I think, I think these machines are for different type of product and they sort of combine machines, so you don't need so many machines.
I mean, it, it's a great business, but, but isn't it, one, decreasing a little parking? It's losing a little bit of the parking they've got. And two, they're gonna be doing more business.
Well, I, I may agree with the second one, but the first one, we, we're actually not decreasing the parking. If you can see on the bottom area here, these six slots where the addition is going, we're actually just sliding those out.
But, okay.
It's the size of the parking lot, but the parking lot-
It's oversized, can we get it?
Parking lot, you can't park cars behind those spaces. So once those spaces are used, that area in the middle of the, the parking lot is just dead space. So what we're doing is sliding the parking spaces into the middle of the parking lot a little bit more. So we're just taking up the, sorry, I don't have a pointer pen to point it out for you.
No, that's fine. I got it, but I mean, at the end of the day, there's still more cars in, in less space. Because all you're really doing, you're right, you're, you're not changing the number of-
You're narrowing the travel lane.
You're narrowing the travel lane, right. Which is, you know, so I guess, is there any way to put egress out onto 376 instead of straight out onto 82, just that way? Is there any way to get that? Cause, I mean, on a Saturday morning, I mean, it's a great business. Like I said, it's a great business, but on a Saturday morning, people trying to take a left into there.
Yeah.
And people trying to take a left out. It's like-
Okay. I, I can certainly, what we're, what we're hoping to do tonight, maybe I can just elaborate on that a little bit, is get all the concerns, you know, we're just here for, for sketch plan, so we can address those concerns in our, you know, our official submission for site plan approval. And the second part is to be referred to the ARB, only because that seems to be, that may take a little while, so we want-
Don't you need the ZBA too for setbacks? This building's pretty close to the road. Are you making setbacks?
Right, there, there are existing non-conforming situations there. If, if the ZBA is one-
I think you need to, because you're expanding, you're, even though you're not changing the use, you're expanding the use of an existing non-conforming building. So you have to-
Right. And that's always, that's always been one of those where it's not making it worse, but because we're expanding the facility, you do want us to pursue-
Well, and coming back to the use, I mean, it, it seems like they'll be producing, like we said, possibly more product or more varied products. Is there gonna be truck traffic here? Are we gonna, you know, I wanna make sure that your circulation of the site is very clear about how you're gonna be loading trucks, if that's the case, and what type of trucks and that sort of thing. So we understand just what's happening there.
When you come in from Route 82, before where the new building's going to be, that lane is barely wide enough now. I mean, if two cars try and back out at the same time, everything just stops.
Right.
There's, there's just not enough room. I'm just wondering, can you float the whole right-hand side parking over and make everything wider?
Angle the parking maybe or something?
Pardon?
You mean angle the spots or something?
No, just, you've got more property room between the next two pieces.
Okay.
Just slide the whole thing over and then the center lane becomes wider and it would make the, yeah, might have to make the cut bigger on 82 to turn, but I think something like that might work and make things a little easier to get in and out.
Right.
Also, for trucks, if you wanted with a wider cut, you know?
You know, one of my concerns with that is if we're talking about widening out parking and increasing the parking lot, then, then maybe something that we'd look at, but then we would be increasing impervious and then we're gonna be talking about stormwater and all that. And quite frankly, stormwater's not gonna, you know, it's, there's nowhere to put it at this point. So, but it's existing.
I've been there with, you get a puddle.
I'm sorry?
You get one puddle on the right-hand side down in the corner, that's it, where the gravel comes in.
Right.
That's, that's the stormwater.
I don't know where it goes, but it goes.
Kick those down.
So, but those are things that we can, we can definitely look at.
So Scott, there, I, I don't think it's an actual driveway, but there, there is some sort of travelway between this lot and out to 376, right?
It's gravel. You can just, I, I, the only, only way to go when 82's painted.
What, is it just a driveway from before the, that orig, that second lot was demolished or the lot in the corner, I mean, was demolished or would, it's just that people found a way they could drive over a field?
It was the driveway for the house.
It was the driveway, okay.
It was being extended through, just.
Okay. So it's not a, it's not any kind of drive we should be using, it's just-
It's nothing official.
Okay.
I look at that. I mean, again, this is a great business and we should get behind this, but it, it, it has a traffic issue, right?
Well, that's why I'm thinking if, you know, if there was a way to angle the parking, but then if, if you have to come back out the same driveway, you can angle it.
Right.
Definitely look at the ARB. Like, what is he thinking about from an exterior?
I actually have a couple of elevations.
I don't think the bread factory in the back's the part that causes the congestion. It's the parking spots up front when people try and back out of there and they're going to the other stores, the, the coffee store.
Do you usually find the lot is crowded when you're there? Or is there a way to maybe take to the spots and-
I'm retired, so I always go when I know there's no crowd.
Where does it need the new, the new counter?
I never go on Saturday.
The counter, I believe, would be through this door here. This is where it exists now, but they're, they're-
Do they have to have a larger counter area?
You know, the, the, the actual interior of the, the building, I'm gonna have to get a little more information on the garage door, the layout.
There's a garage door there.
No, no, that's, that's actually where the retail is now, but I think bringing in-
It's gonna make that the loading.
Right, right. Cause they bring in the flour and all that stuff and they actually have to carry it through those doors. I think they're gonna make it so they can just hope they don't, I think.
And they must have, they must have delivery runs, right? So you'd have probably trucks getting loaded with finished product, I would think.
Right, exactly. And, and I think that, you know, to your point about concerns about traffic and things like that, you know, with the, with the existing, you actually have to sort of back the truck up to-
Right.
Into one of the parking spaces to unload and load. This is, this door off to the side is gonna facilitate backing up to the side of the building and keeping your parking open.
Okay. Do you know what you have beyond the edge of pavement there where the, where the, the part, I'm sorry, now I'm pointing at the building. I'm sorry.
Nothing, just me and the garage door.
Cause I'm almost wondering if you couldn't build a site circulation this way?
That's, I was wondering.
Where you could, if you angled these and then you'd have a space for trucks to back up to the loading. Sorry, I'm writing all of this down. It's probably Pam's.
With the same curb cut, with the same membership?
Yeah, I'm thinking if you could, if you could angle the parking spots, you might be able to get some kind of, some kind of circulation around.
On Saturdays, on Saturdays, basically from eight to noon, there's always standing traffic right through there, right? Just basically, there's always standing traffic on a Saturday, two lanes.
Right.
Yeah, that's rule of hope.
It's all hopeful.
Yeah.
Particularly, yes. But I mean, again, yeah, that's a great business.
I know, a lot of times I'm stuck in that traffic, you know?
That last video though, what was, what was, was that looking east or west?
That was actually, that was looking from, if you were standing on 376, looking over to the side.
To the new.
So this area here is now the retail.
Right.
This is the existing. This area right here is the retail, the door walks in right here. On the end here is where that garage door would go. So instead of having your delivery trucks back up to the, to the building here in these parking spaces, they could actually back up to the side of the building here, so.
Guys, we keep, we, your conversation is coming over the mic.
And, and of course, you know, the, this bill, this business-
I was waving, they weren't watching.
Because of what it is, you know, this bread needs to be fresh and at the stores at, you know, five o'clock in the morning, so these trucks are getting loaded in, in the very early hours.
Well, bring that back to us, what, you know, times trucks will be going in and out and they're putting additional-
Okay.
I know some go in and out now because that, that bread is available all the places.
I'm, I'm sorry?
That bread is available other places, so I know that, that there's-
Oh, yeah, there's cer, there certainly is.
Yeah, you, you never see them during the day, cause, I mean, everything's gone by them.
Right. So, yeah, so times of the truck.
Hours of operation of the trucks and how much more traffic do you think it's gonna generate? I mean.
These trucks are vans, aren't they, John?
They're box trucks, but they're, they're short. They're not, they're not big rigs or nothing like that, no. I've never seen a tractor trailer.
I've never seen anything, but, no.
I've never seen tractor trailers either.
I like nothing like this.
I don't know how they get in and get out.
Just see what you can do with the circulation. You've got a little bit of land there and see if you can-
I think if they were maybe to approach DOT for a commercial curb cut on 376 and develop that ground to drive.
You mean across the other lot?
Yeah. And that would benefit other two lots to, to, and give you true circulation and give And that would benefit other two lots to, to, and give you true circulation and give you.
Yeah.
How far is that?
It's probably forty, fifty yards.
Eighty, you know?
Forty yards maybe? Yeah, it's a.
No, it's not that much.
I don't think I have anything on there. You know, the scale is one to thirty, so.
You're looking at two hundred plus feet.
Because for the cars looking to exit the site and make the left, it's a difficult motion. They can go that way to the signal if they wanna come back out on eighty-two.
Is it far enough back from the intersection?
Yeah.
Is it, is that?
While, while there was a pre-existing residential, so the question of whether a commercial would play out there for DOT.
And certainly, you know, I'll have to speak to the applicant about this and, and find out, you know, what, what rights are over that property.
Exactly.
Uh, you know, I don't know if that would be a, a full access, uh, entrance would be permitted over these vacant lots. I know that, I believe it used to be the driveway to one of the houses and it just, I think people were just driving across the lawn and then it turned into a road and, and it is what it is now. But, uh, as legal entrance and exit from it, I, I don't know. I'd have to find out.
Well, like I said, you've got a little bit of space there on your, your own lot to possibly do some sort of circular. If you, you'd lose a couple of the spaces that are probably not very usable right up against the road anyway. But if you could angle them and even get some, maybe some spaces, if you came around, you'd probably make up for it. Take a look and see.
Sure. And you are going to the ARB? If, if that is, if I can be referred to the ARB, that'd be great.
We'll write you a note and go to the ARB.
Excellent.
ARB and ZBA.
And the, and the ZBA.
ZBA for, just, just because it's a non-conforming use, you gotta get your stuff back. Any, any other questions or comments from board members? Michelle or Joe?
Please don't move the fact.
Michelle or Joe, any, anything else we should be talking about for the sketch plan review?
I think. I'm in there quite a bit.
We are talking about the things we noticed about parking and circulation and the extra driveway, so. Yeah, nothing really.
Any other questions for us?
Uh, no, that, that's it. Um, you know, I, basically, looking at the entrance over to three seventy-six, uh, traffic, hours of operation, um, the interior layout of the building. And I don't know if the board members have any other concerns.
No, and I'm presum- maybe it's the wrong presumption. I'm presuming you aren't changing hours of operation. You're just expanding the operation itself?
No, I, yeah, correct.
Does that building have any fire protection in it, John?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, yeah. And that's something that I can look at.
You'll have an FAB review as well. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
But again, it's one of those things that, we wanna keep that in town.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It is a treasure. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Willen Properties admitted site plan on Route fifty-two. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Watson from Insight Engineering. We're representing the applicants, Willen Properties. Property is formerly known as the Shade and Sun property on Route fifty-two in top of Stormville Mountain. It was operated as the Shade and Sun Nursery by the Shoddy family for approximately thirty years. Property consists of four separate tax parcels. And, um, some of you may know the Shade and Sun business, they, they went out of business. Someone else tried to come in and run a nursery for about a year, I think it was Greystone Gardens. That didn't work out well, so, and then it sat for a couple of months. And then Willen took the property over last fall. When they did, they did not do a, any type of due diligence research on the property. So at the time, they thought that everything was legal, code conforming when, when they took over the property. They went in, they had a marble and tile retail showroom tenant and also a guy that sells fireplaces. And then they were starting to bring in some topsoil, some materi- some soil and thinking that because the landscaping, previous landscaping use allowed that, that they thought they could do similar types of, of, of uses on the property. Uh, they were served with four violations from the town. And, um, we're here tonight to discuss those violations, how to remedy those violations and talk about future plans of the property.
Let's talk about the current use of the property and what you're proposing.
Sure. The current use of the property, there's a, as I mentioned, there's a granite and tile showroom in the existing nurse, where the nursery showroom was, the ex- the building. Also a fireplace showroom. So those are two retail uses that is, you know, as I mentioned, there's four separate parcels. One is in the B-one zone. The building for the, with, with these uses are in the B-one zone. There are three residentially zoned parcels attached to this, that are part of the, part of the deal. Two of them are residential properties. One is right off of fifty-two, that's where the engine's driveway comes in and has the parking lot and the sign for the existing business. The second residential parcel is just uphill of that. That's where the material storage was for Shade and Sun. That's where they kept all their mulch, stone. And, uh, in the back, I don't know if you can see from my aerial map here, there's another large residential parcel in the back.
You mean this one?
Yep, thank you. That's accessed by a common driveway, there's a common dri- let me bring this over. There's a driveway off of Route fifty-two, it's called Shady Lane. Comes up through the center of the properties here, accesses this piece in the back. There are, uh, two residential houses that ha- that also access this, this common driveway that are not part of this application, not controlled or owned by these, by, by Willen. There is an existing rental house here that is also on the B-one parcel that accesses, gains access off this driveway.
And that was an existing, single family, multifamily?
Uh, single family, single family.
So the nursery property is now fully utilized by a, you said, a marble and granite and a fireplace?
Correct. There's mo- most of, yeah, the parking and the sign are on this residential parcel here. They use this upper pad for storage. And the actual showroom is on this B-one parcel here.
Which is where the nursery building is.
Correct, where the nursery building is, correct.
And that's just a separate tenant, right?
Separate tenant, yes.
Okay, it's, it's not the.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the, it's not Willen Properties, it's, yeah, they, they have a tenant.
The, the material storage on the, the second lot in, is that, who, who is using, who's storing materials there now? Is that the tenant or is that?
Right now, it's just the tenant. Prior, the, Willen was using the property as, uh, Will- Willen was, uh, bringing material into the property and they were gonna use it as like a wholesale mulch and soil. Uh, they have since, part of the, one of the violations from the town was a stop work order to stop all work on the residential properties. So they have since pulled out all the commercial vehicles and, and commercial equipment that were on these residential parcels while we deal with the violations. But yeah, currently, there's only marbles and tile storage up here.
Okay.
And what were the violations with the back part?
Say it again?
What were the violations for the back part?
This?
Yes.
There's no violation on that yet.
No violations, okay, so none of those.
Yeah, I, I did say, yeah, yes. It's a couple months.
You didn't mean to say yet. And I think I remember from the drawing that there, there's nursery stock growing there.
Correct.
I was gonna say, is that tree farm?
That's, yeah, there was a, there's a tree farm back here. As you can see from just the aerial, there's quite a bit of, uh, pine trees, spruce trees, couple of flowering trees. And, um, that has been, you know, historically used as a tree farm, sold as part of, you know, Shade and Sun as, as sort of part of their stock. Willen does plan on continuing to sell that, or, or not to sell from there, but to use that and sell it in the fall, this fall. So that's one of the things we're looking to at least, you know, put you on notice and let you know that we're, that's something they plan on doing this fall, is to continue to sell trees off the tree farm.
So would that mean people traveling Shady Lane to go up to that lot?
Actually, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be retail, it's gonna be wholesale. What they'll do is they'll, 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 they'll contract with landscapers from, from off-site that will just come in and grab it. So there'll be no retail sale, there'll be no signs, trees for sale or anything like that. Is that correct, Paul?
The, uh, the issue that I think for the zoning point of view is the nursery was a pre-existing non-conforming use. The structure is in a, a commercial district. But the ancillary nursery caught the stock filing materials, et cetera, in the residential zone. So now what you're really doing is you're bringing in another business into the, two businesses into the existing structure in the commercial district. And then you're really trying to now use what was ancillary to the garden center and make that a full wholesale garden, which I think that changes the, the non-conformity as to what it was. That might be a question that the zoning board has to interpret. Because apparently, you know, the, the, uh, non-conforming use in a residential district has been ancillary to the primary nursery greenhouses in the, in the business district.
Well, I think what, one of the things I was gonna say though, Tom, is I'm not sure why they would need to continue using, why tenants would need to continue using. I mean, the, the, the commercial lot's fairly large.
Actually, it's okay to have that.
But my point is the commercial lot is fairly large. Wouldn't storage be able to be placed on that commercial lot rather than using the residential lot in, in a non-conforming way?
Yeah, the only reason it's being used is because it's a big wide open space that's there that's easy to get trucks into. It's, and it's historically been used for storage associated with the property.
And is the entrance to the second property still pretty much across the street from a very large industrial plant?
Correct.
So it's, it's not like it's ruining the pristine stretch of ground, right?
But you're not supposed to have a commercial store on a nursery.
The non-conforming area, if you look at the non-conforming area, is immediately surrounded by residential homes. If you look at the other side, the commercial, the industrial type operation, there's a steep elevation difference in the back end, which is, it's a little different in the impact into. And the factory across the street is fully zoned for that use. We had met with the, um, current owner and his prior professional numerant, I think at least two times, to explain that our recommendation was that perhaps they petition the town board to do a rezoning of the site to make it, um, more fitting to the multiple uses that he wishes to do. And yet allow for the creation of a buffer area, et cetera, with the residential zone here. And that that would really be a major way to clean it up, make it a very conforming use and a, a good producing tax base. However, they're choosing to try to, in my opinion, jerry-rig several different uses into a site that's pre-existing non-conforming. And I think there's also a valid question as to whether or not the pre-existing use of the property hadn't ceased for a period of one, one year, which would render it back to.
Back to residential.
Residential in one area and, uh, commercial needing a site plan in the other area. The other issue you have, you also have a non-conformity that you have a residential house with the commercial building.
But that house is.
All of which we explained to the property owner who was prior applicant. I think there was a reference that he just recently acquired it. But my recollection is within the last few years that we've met with the.
I think that you, Willen only got involved a year ago, right? It was October, October of twenty-eleven? So it's only been one year since they've been involved. I've only been involved for six weeks.
I know.
So, but yeah.
So, so do you remember being approached with?
Uh, there was another, they had another engineer prior to me.
So that.
They had a prior professional.
So, okay.
So what's the reason not to go to the town?
What's that?
What's the reason not to go to the town to get a rezon?
Well, they, they got this property thinking they could just continue what they were doing. They, they had big dreams to do a big, you know, at, at the time they saw you before with the prior engineer.
There was no granite shop in there.
What?
No. There was no granite shop.
No, but it was retail.
Maybe that's probably then the misunderstanding is that the, the use actually hasn't continued, the use has changed, and that's.
Understood, we're here for a change of use. And instead of, you know, they had plans to do something that was more intensive use than what was there with the nursery. They thought that they could do that. They have since learned, with our meeting about a month ago, that it's not allowed, you know, it's not allowed per zoning and that they're, they're not looking now to go for an increase in the intensity of the use. They just want to continue with, they'd like to perfect.
Okay, so let's step through exactly what, exactly what, um, the property owner wants. So the rear lot continuing to use it as the tree farm, nursery stock, wholesale only, not gonna be a retail.
Correct.
Current use, no change to the current use?
Correct.
The commercial lot is a change of use 'cause it's different tenants, different type of business?
Correct.
Are you going to expand so that those tenants can have storage on that lot?
What we'd like to do is define the previously existing storage areas. Whatever the limits of store, outdoor storage was with Shade and Sun, we'd like to just continue that. We're not looking to increase the area.
The R-three use, the, the residential lot, that goes away when, when the nursery is not there. So if that's something, I think to Tom's point, if that's something that, that the property owner wants to pursue, it likely requires a change in, in use, or cha- sorry, change in zoning.
No, I, I think it's, it's open to interpretation. Obviously, the zoning board, he may be very well-served by going to the zoning board and to prove to them what the non-conformity was, to suggest to them what the proposed use is and to allow them to decide if that's a consistent non-conformity.
Boy, I think it would just be easier.
But they're not proposing, but they're not proposing to put nursery stock here. That's not what was happening.
I understand that, but with pre-existing non-conforming use, it doesn't, it was used for outdoor storage of materials that was ancillary to the retail business that was in the business zone. So that, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be liked alike. It means, is it a similar use, is it as impactful or as less impactful as the use that was established?
So somehow there was construction equipment?
Well, now there's construction equipment that was brought in, right?
There's other materials.
I think those are other issues that will.
There's how much storage of granite and materials like that in front of the business where.
But, but why, why is my question not valid to say, why can't we store those materials on the site that's already zoned for it? Like, I don't, I'm not, I guess I'm not following why we couldn't look at, can that site?
That's not what they're asking to do.
Why can't I ask that question?
I don't, I didn't say you can't ask it, I'm just saying.
I'm asking that question. Is there a way to store those materials for those tenants?
You're suggesting everything be confined to the business.
But the entire parking is on the, the residential zone, so you might as well just. All the parking's on its bottom line, right?
Right, we haven't gotten to that one yet.
Okay, so forget the storage.
I'm trying to go lot by lot.
There'll be no place to park?
I don't know that, I don't know what's ca- what, what can be built or done with that commercial lot.
I live right there.
I'm asking the questions.
I think the easiest thing is to go to the zone.
You mean unilateral, I mean, unidirectional trip?
The zoning board is the interpreter of questions about.
Whether or not an R-three could continue to be used when the change of, when the use has potentially changed. I got it. I got it.
No, my question was, is a unidirectional trip? I mean, I, I don't see where this is, if they get the zoning.
Well, the only parcel that you theoretically grant site plan approval for is the commercial one. You have no jurisdiction to grant site plan approval in the residential district.
But if they get.
And that's why I'm asking questions to see whether the commercial parcel can support.
It can't.
The uses that are there.
All of the, all, all of the parking is on the residential piece.
Okay, and it couldn't be changed? The commercial lot can't be, there's nothing that can be done there to put parking on that lot?
I don't know without looking at it in detail.
Okay. To me, that's a question.
Yep.
Now, the other, if we look at the front residential lot, um, there's a sign on it now. I think that's the same location that the original nursery sign was, is that correct?
That's the sign, that's the size and shape and location of the Shade and Sun sign that's been there for decades.
The name on the sign has changed, but other than that?
They screwed a new face on the sign and painted it purple.
The sign itself is still the same.
All right, so technically, is that because the sign is in the same place it's always been, but because the use changed, is that also something that needs to be reviewed and approved? Or is that something that stands because the sign's always been there?
It's pre-existing. I go back to the point that anything on a residential property that was there before zoning could continue to be there, so if the sign's been there, it can continue to be there. But you cannot approve a change of it or relocation of it, it has to stay exactly the way it was the use and location. Non-conformity is not just a use, but it's also dimension.
I have a question.
Tom, my question is, it's in the same spot, it's the same size, the words on the sign are different. Does that constitute a change to the sign or are we okay with it?
That's not, if there is a question to that, that's the zoning board's role to choose.
But didn't you just say, because it wasn't a nursery for over a year that it goes.
Is the issue is to whether.
It goes back to residential.
That could be, that could be an issue, that's an issue that would have to be addressed by the property owner to prove to satisfaction the zoning board that there's been no renovation.
The parking being on the residential area was a non-conforming use.
Correct.
Before zoning. So if they continue to park in the residential area and you go along with the rest of it, then it's all right.
Correct.
It stays a non-conforming use, that's all right. Sorry, I was getting lost.
Provided there was not a lapse.
Correct, provided there was no lapse.
Yeah, we, we believe there's.
Sorry, I was just trying to, I see if I understood that.
We, we believe there's not been a twelve-month lapse in use on the property that between Shade and Sun going out of business, Greystone coming in, he went out. I know someone sold pumpkins there. There have been.
Wasn't Greystone here originally when the new business took over? As far as cutting slabs of granite and storing them?
Yeah, that's.
Greystone? They were a nursery.
No.
They took it over as a nursery.
The, the business, I know the granite and cutting came back in here.
We had, we had a tenant there that was trying to operate the nursery, trying to get it running and, uh, doors open and some minor stock. It was Halloween time, the pumpkins, uh, couldn't make it, couldn't get the inventory. That's where the granite shop. We didn't realize that we needed to come and tell the town that we had a different use of that building. This is how this transpired. Back section of residential, which has a, a commercial garage on it, was used by Greystone twice. I know we said a quick name of storage.
On the residential act, always check that.
We were, we were at fault with not knowing that we needed to come to you We were, we were at fault with not knowing that we needed to, you, additional built, uh, businesses that we wanted to incorporate on the same property because property is, in honesty, is very large. And a nursery just won't cut it these days as you want it to be on that property.
So is there a reason why you won't go to the town to get a rezone for what you want to do?
Well, we're here tonight to address our violations, to make sure that you guys are not gonna shut us down with the granite shop. We've got sign violations, which was one of the issues, I believe, we'll address it. And we're putting together, we've been trying to assemble the site and everything, but now that is what we take care of. We will have a site plan with all the wishes and desires, so.
It's not that they don't want-
We, we have to take this because we need to keep this place open.
It's not that they don't want to do the rezoning?
Whatever we need to do to please the board, if we need to go zoning, we'll go rezone.
They're trying to do, they have plans for the property. They're willing to change their plans to be more in performance with what you would like or what you would permit.
So that's why, that's why we're trying to step you through what the options are right now. Because if you, if you want to use the property as it stands today, there's certain things you can and can't do. If you want, as Tom is saying, if you want to go to the ZBA and seek a variance from them to allow you to continue the nonconforming use with new tenants, potential, that, that's a, that's a decision that somebody has to make, whether or not the new use conforms with the, I shouldn't say conforms with the old use, but whether or not it, it could be considered continuing and allow you to be on these R3 lots with that use. That's, um, short of that, again, you could, your other avenue is to go, go to the town and see if you can have those two lots rezoned so that then it, it just becomes whatever the conforming uses would be for that business zone, right?
Well, I, I guess the question I've got, again, it's for Tom, is if the year never happened, if it wasn't abandoned for a year, then the parking of the commercial equipment in the residential lot is grandfathered as a nonconforming use, correct?
If that was there as the nonconforming use?
Correct.
But it, but it wasn't, it didn't stand empty for a year, though.
Pardon?
It, it didn't stand empty for a year.
Then if it didn't stand empty for a year, then the nonconforming use is okay.
Right, so there was, there was continuity, it just had change of the product line.
Which, which means the violation, it really isn't a violation if you look at the top first one. Because it's a nonconforming use that existed as a precondition and it wasn't abandoned for years.
But, but again, I think what Tom is saying is it's not up to the planning board to decide whether a granite business is the same business as a nursery business from a zoning perspective. So they have to go to the zoning board and say, we changed the use of the property, this is our new tenant, will you allow it to, to remain as the nursery remained? Am I saying that correctly? If I'm not, you-
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, see, and also-
It's not a nursery business. It's not a nursery business putting nursery stock on the back lot and using the front lot as a parking.
So am I then to understand that it would be okay if we can establish that the place where the commercial vehicles are stored, that the year number passed, then we should be able to continue storing commercial vehicles? If not?
I'm not a, that, that's certainly something you have to talk to the zoning board. I don't know that the nursery business stored commercial vehicles on that back lot.
They absolutely did.
So, that's something that-
Well, yeah, but they're not, they're not storing vehicles, the granite business is not storing vehicles. It's, the property owner's storing vehicles there, so.
That's where we came into the issue. We, we ideally, our thought was to have the nursery on the two, our, the two residential pieces, have on the granite on the, on the commercial. But if we had to give up one or the other, we, we stopped doing anything on that property so the granite place can stay up.
Well, let, let's have you go to-
We still have plants, we have trees, we have things like that. And we, we took all the equipment off, we took all the landscaping stuff out.
Let's have you go to the ZBA, describe what you want to do and see what the ZBA permits. That's their decision to decide, to determine what would happen. And then you, your alternatives, depending what the decision of the ZBA is, go from there. Whether it's a rezone of the R3s, whether they accept the use as you're proposing it, whether, I, I, they'll, they'll tell you what they, what they would decide as the proper continuing use of the property.
They'll interpret that is the proposed use consistent with the nonconforming use. Then that narrows the issue here as to what change you might, or what site plan issue you might have in the commercial lot. But it would probably solve the question as to the two residential lots. That would be the clearest way is to the residential lots. So if they agree that the storage of equipment and the solid type of material and the parking vehicles for the commercial lot is similar to what was there, they'll give you, that's, that's it, then you don't even have to discuss these two lots with the planning board. Then you just come back for-
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval because you're changing it from a nursery to whatever granite and-
Multitenant.
Whatever code issues that creates. I don't know if it creates a parking issue, a storage issue, whatever.
But we have to, we have to make sure the ZBA understands that there's parking on one of the R3s for this commercial site and that they're gonna allow that and the storage and the sign. And if the single-family home on the commercial site also needs to be grandfathered with the new business use, I think all of those things need to be discussed with the ZBA and, and a determination made.
Tom, I mean, that would give them a reprieve, right? That would give a reprieve.
It would tell them how they can use the property currently.
Would the applicant do better to just go to the town board and say, look?
Well, that's their choice. Obviously, a property that's conforming to a zoning board is, is more valuable and has more flexibility, et cetera, but the property owner doesn't.
Because you know, next-
So they choose to go, we keep it nonconforming, we get all of the interpretations from zoning board, that's certainly a problem.
It only puts them behind about a month if they go to the ZBA first and if the ZBA says we're fine with everything you're talking about.
But if they actively pursue the application with the zoning board, it provides them with a stay of enforcement. I mean, they can't go hog wild, but it certainly prevents them from being penalized or heard by the prosecutor because of the violations.
Is that the technical definition of hog wild or is that the informal definition?
Sounded pretty good to me.
The, the question is, if the zoning board were to say, yes, it's, it's okay what they're doing, it's just a continuation, then there are effectively no violations. Is that correct, or?
Blake coming within the site plan.
Well, there's still a site plan that has to be brought back.
If, if the zoning administrator issues a violation to a property owner and they disagree with it, they appeal to the zoning board.
Right.
So if they go to the zoning board for an interpretation and that interpretation clarifies things, it may very well eliminate some of the violations.
Then the violations just don't exist because the-
Like some, like because of film material. I think that is film news. But as to the use of property, et cetera, they're only quite the same.
Correct. That's what I, that's why I thought you were proposing the ZBA rather than the town.
But I want to make sure you know everything you need to discuss with the ZBA. Because if you, if you miss one of them, then we only have to send you back again.
Will the minutes be available in the next couple weeks, or does it take a while for the minutes of this meeting to become available?
They're, they're very slow.
Wow, wow, boy. Tom, you're on a roll tonight.
See if you get that down.
Well, I hate to see how your comments are gonna be-
By no means hog wild. Record it on TV, John.
Yeah.
Usually-
They'll be honest.
Cam, what would, what would, realistically, what would the next, what would the next zoning board meeting be?
He would have to have everything in by Monday at noon.
This coming Monday?
Yep, 27th. And that would put him on September, well, in September, it's Wednesday, September 12th, the meeting.
Do they have one or two meetings a month?
One.
Okay.
So September 12th would be the review, October 9th would be the public hearing.
So realistically, our minutes will not be approved by then? Even if we got them tomorrow, they, they wouldn't be approved?
That's fine. I've been taking notes, I think.
Okay.
Again, this is rebroadcast. This is making DVD and seriously-
My clarification, I just want to understand.
Sure.
When I, when I gather, um, there's no, there's nothing that has to be discussed about the rear lot.
Right.
That, that can continue wholesale of the nursery products or treaters or whatever they're doing there.
Well, can it?
Wholesale, not retail.
My understanding is that use never changed and it hasn't stopped, so-
Correct.
So there's no, so there's no, nothing that has to be discussed about the rear-
The use hasn't changed and it hasn't stopped. So you can cer- certainly tell the ZBA that that lot, what it's being used for and that you're not intending to change the use, but make sure you tell them so that they understand that's what you're doing.
Yep.
For the B1-
Yep, commercial lot.
Um, there's, the existing issue is that you've got a change of use here, so that has, that is subject to site plan approval, but that in itself is not anything that will be discussed with the zoning board. The two residential lots, which I guess are 448027 and 439994, what you're confirming is whether or not the zoning board interprets the code to say that the, the existing storage and parking on this lot is a pre-existing nonconforming in continuation, essentially. They're gonna say to you, we, we think that this is just a continued pre-existing nonconforming use.
But, but I think you do have to discuss it in the context of the use of the commercial lot because you're trying to pair the use of the commercial lot with the use of those two residential lots. And that's what you want to be, you, you want to continue to use those lots although the tenants have changed, as ancillary uses to the existing commercial.
So it's go back to the rear lot, that, the tree farm in the back, that's not ancillary to the former nursery? Because that is our residential right there, isn't it?
Yep.
So if they don't get the, the nursery status, how are you gonna continue to have that? Why don't you just throw it into the zoning board? So it's losing your life.
That's what we said.
Sure.
We told them to tell them that it's the continuing use that isn't changing.
Yeah. Do you have one more, one more question?
Sure.
In Mary's violation note, she notes that things have been dumped on the property. It looks like construction debris. Now, was that from the previous owners or was that you guys or?
Both.
Has it just been there?
Both, yeah.
So that's something you have to clean up in any case?
It was. That was mostly debris from the period we sold and we applied like six dumpsters and that's probably what she was partying to.
Okay.
She's there, one of the dumpsters or two of the dumpsters are still there. I said, can I take one?
Okay, so that, that's taken care of in any case? Because I just thought that was separate.
I think, I think there's gonna be some test pitting and there's gonna be some investigation as it goes on.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was some fill brought in and spread over existing storage areas so that, that will be, as we get into the site plan approval process.
It just seemed like that was a separate issue from all the other stuff we-
And Michelle, did you also mention that they're asking for the sign on the R3 also to be continued as paired to the use of commercial? So the sign, I think, is also, you want to mention to the ZBA. So you've got sign and parking on the front lot, you've got the storage on the second lot and tree farm on the rear lot.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That's all we have on our agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second. All in favor? Thanks, guys.